Called a meeting, Wayne County Board of Commissioners is now in session. Like to remind everyone, if you have cell phones, please either cut them down, put them on vibrate, or cut them off. Invitation this morning is by Commissioner Joe Doherty.
Let's bow our heads. Almighty and loving Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we praise you. You are King of kings. We humbly ask for your forgiveness of our sins. We are gathered here today to conduct the business of Wayne County. Send us your Holy Spirit to be our God and give us the wisdom to understand every topic that we are going to discuss today. Enlighten our minds to make the best decisions for our county. Soften our minds and our hearts as we seek common ground. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion of approval of amendments of the March 2nd, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor, in a discussion. All in favor, show a sign of right hand.
Was that unanimous?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. County Manager, is any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, there is not.
Okay, if not, special presentations, I turn it over to you. Do I have a motion? Do we approve the agenda?
So moved.
In discussion? If none, show a sign of right hand. Special presentations, Mr. Honeycutt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first is a motion to approve Positive Parenting Awareness Proclamation, presented by Valerie Wallace, the Partnership for Children of Wayne County. And if Ms. Wallace is here.
Good morning. Actually, I want to let Melissa Harold do the presentation. She works with Wages Head Start, and she's the one who presented the proclamation.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity. I represent Wages, and we are excited to have this positive parenting opportunity for our community, and the efforts that we're going to do is to enlighten our community to all of the wonderful parenting programs that are out there. And the goal for that is for parents to be able to have access to those programs, because we know that when parents have access to positive parenting programs, they are then able to have good skills, which thereby reduces the amount of child neglect and abuse in our county. So thank you so much for supporting these efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion for approval.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor, in a discussion? If none, I'll show a sign of right hand.
Is that a motion by?
And number two, under special presentations, Area Agency on Aging Services, Ms. Heather O'Connor with the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments, and we also have Paula Edwards, our senior center director is here as well, so.
Hi, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman ACOC and Board of Commissioners. Thank you for having us here this morning. My name is Katie Bordao. I'm the executive director for the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments. Vice Chairman Hardison, appreciate your participation on our board. You're a very valued member of our board. Thank you. This morning, allow me to introduce two of our staff members that will be presenting to you all this morning on what we do for your community. To my left here is Heather O'Connor. She is our aging director. And this other staff, professional staff, is January Brown, who is our lead aging consultant. So I'm gonna turn them over to you all. Thank you.
Here's your mouse. Hi, good morning. We are here to kind of give you some information about our different programs that you can do within our Older American Act's funding. There are multiple programs, and we have provided handouts that you'll be getting that tell you what your county currently offers. And then there's a list that'll tell you what you can offer. Right now with COVID, there's a lot of different options available that may meet the changing needs of a lot of our seniors that they haven't needed in the past. So we want to present to you some of the options and kind of go over some of the things that we can expand on before we go to contract. So January Brown is gonna go over some of that stuff with you this morning and give you an idea of what you're looking at.
So currently, right now, with the aging population, you can see on the graph here for Wayne County, we've done the breakdown from the 2018 aging profile that the state does, all the way up to DAS. And currently for Wayne County, you have about 27,000, close to 28,000 older adults, 60 to 64 years old. Our funds are to assist older adults that are 60 and over to stay independent in the community as long as possible with home type of programs. So you can see here your breakdown of population of your citizens according to the state in North Carolina. So this is our population that we look at. It's the 60 and above population, along with caregivers of older adults and grandparents raising grandchildren populations. The funding that we provide to the county comes from the Older Americans Act, which then goes to the Administration of Living, goes to our state, and then the state uses an interstate funding formula to break it down to the county level. Our agency is the Area Agency on Aging. We receive the funding for the entire region, and then we take that money and do a fun little formula based off your population, and we give it to the agency at the local level. So for instance, here in Wayne County, we have two providers that receive the Older Americans Act funding. It is Paula Edwards over at Wayne Senior Services, and then also Wages. Wages provides your home-delivered meals and congregant meals to your county constituents. So just to give you kind of a little information. We have two types of funding that come down the funding stream. One is called Home Community Care Block Grant. Those are more of your community service type of programs, like in homemade. Like I said, the home-delivered meals, congregant meals, home maintenance, home modifications, and option counseling that we provide to older adults. Then you have your other side, which are not part of that grant, but we have the Family Caregiver Support Program. That is helping caregivers in the community to take care of older adults, helps them prevent caregiver burnout, and helps them in their journey. Then you also have evidence-based healthy promotions programs. These are different types of classes that are provided to older adults, even caregivers, to help promote them being healthy, taking care of themselves, and trying to keep them active in their community. Especially because of COVID, we've been trying to address the need of social isolation, and these types of classes really can help keep those older adults engaged, either onsite. Paula's been doing a lot of onsite classes with social distancing, but also doing it on a virtual platform to keep them engaged during this time. The program goals is to access service for in-home services, long-term care advocacy, such as our Ombudsman Program. They are working in long-term care facilities and help advocate for families and resident rights, and then also legal aid services and our Family Caregiver Support Program. As Commissioners, the reason why we're coming and talking with you today about this is because once we go to the budget planning part, which we're getting ready to do budgets for the new fiscal year, these budgets then come to the Commissioners and are reviewed and approved before they go to, as we say, contract print and go active. You sign the finalized county budgets. You also approve and appoint our CAC, which is our advisory committees in the long-term care facilities. You appoint those volunteers. And you also appoint our RAC, which is our advisory aging committee members, and the senior Tar Heel Legislative Committee members. So you play a very active role in the progression and moving on with the program services. Some of the common services we see, senior nutrition programs, transportation programs, such as here, we have seniors going to and from the senior center to doctor's appointments, and then the in-home aid services. Some other common services, underneath the Family Caregiver Support Program, like here in Wayne County, we currently have a respite voucher program that is provided and assists caregivers with respite breaks. In-home aid respite services, incontinent supplies. We have a support group here in Wayne County that's run, along with liquid nutrition. And those are all highly needed supportive services for caregivers. And as I said, we have the evidence-based programs that improve function for better nutrition, improve physical activity, and can reduce falls, along with keeping them just active. The Long-Term Care Facility Ombudsman's assists. They are going out currently, right now, as a matter of fact, your long-term care facilities here in this area, because of COVID, are receiving iPad or different types of tablets throughout the region to help get the residents in the long-term care facility engaged with family members so that they can Zoom with them, so they can have that face-to-face contact with family that might not be able to come into the facility at this time. With that, they've been going throughout the region the last couple of days delivering those. So it's a great service in-service for them. With the program and with the funding that's coming down the pipeline, Wayne County does a really, really good job on utilizing the funds and providing a number of services to older adults. They're not focused on one type of service in our county. Paula's program is amazing with all of the different types of educational programs that they do for caregivers, to the older adults, to even just providing professional training. And like I said, the food service here is one of the best-run, most-served meals in the region that we have currently. Wages does a very good job on getting those meals out and servicing a high number of clients. So when you're looking at your budgets, or when you're having these budgets come through and they're doing their presentations, looking in that, kind of seeing what the need is of your clients and constituents in your area, does the plan that's being presented in front of you go in line with what you see is the need? And giving the agencies the support that they need to meet the needs of this population is always the best thing we can always advocate for. If you ever have any questions about budgets, what is this money? With like a presentation on information on older adult services, education on resident rights, which you all might be able to help with your long-term care facility staff, or you just want to know what the Older Americans Act is, we encourage you to reach out to our agency, and we can definitely provide you any type of training. If not, we can get that for you from somebody else. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, what is the requirements to receive this kind of benefit? I mean, is there, just had to be 60 or 65 older?
Each level or each thing has a little bit different requirement. But the main thing is they have to be 60 and over. Homebound clients have to meet a little bit stricter guidelines than your congregant clients, only because they have to show that they need the meals homebound. And your evidence-based programs, those are pretty much age-specific, and then they vary a little bit. Family caregiver has a very structured of what the requirement is, because it's actually the caregiver, not is the client.
And I have caregiver, and with the caregiver program, they have to be caring for somebody 60 or over, or somebody of any age with a form of dementia. So I have caregivers that are 18 years old, taking care of their grandparents. I've got, you know, husband and wife, 90-year-olds, taking care of each other. So the caregiver program, we pretty much are doing, it's not so age-specific, but our other programs are 60 and above is the requirement for that.
So they just have to contact you to receive assistance?
Well, for the services here in Wayne County, Wages does the meal programs, but then the other older adult services, such as the caregiver program, the support groups, in-home aid, that all will go to Paula for those direct services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, I'm really astounded by the number of residents that are 60 and older here in Wayne County. I mean, that kind of stands out.
Yeah.
That means that 20, a little over 22% of our population is in that category. We're aging out.
Yes. Well, and they're saying too, that by the year 2025, and it's, here in North Carolina, by year 2025, there are gonna be more people over the age of 60 than there is 0 to 18 in the state of North Carolina. So we are, and you know, it's almost, it's 2021, so that's very.
It'll be here before.
It's gonna be before, because you've got those baby boomers coming in.
Well, I was taken by your explanation on budgeting and how the funds are passed down. And I understand you to say that the funds come from the federal government to the state, and then the state allocates that out. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So they are making a determination. Are we checking to make sure that Eastern North Carolina, and Wayne County specifically, is getting our share of those dollars?
They use a funding formula, and that is why it is so important that the citizens submit their census, because they use all that information to determine the percentage your county gets.
Well, once that's determined, and it is allocated, then it's up to our agencies to actually use those funds.
Yes, correct.
And I hope we're not leaving any dollars on the table.
We work very hard. County that blow it right out of the water.
Okay, all right. That's good.
And normally, around May, we start in December, looking at the budgets, because that's half a year. And then once we start looking into that, we look at the counties that are overspending, and then the counties that are underspending. We shift the money within a county, so if you have three providers, you've got one under, but two are over, we divide that money so it stays within your county, so that it decreases your county dollar.
We cover nine counties, and we want to go to the state and say, we are 100% spent. We are awesome. So we really work with the providers on shifting that money, especially at that second part of the year, to get it off the table and spent.
We do not want to give any money back.
No.
Amen.
And Paula has been a winner in a lot of the extra funds that some of the other counties, for other reasons, can't spend. We do try to compensate leftover money to the counties that are over.
Well, the purpose of the question was to make sure that our residents know what a great job that they're getting.
She is. She is very good. And Kristen is new, so she is gonna, this is gonna be her first year in that year-end money shuffle.
Great.
And just to let you know, because this came up last night at a Commissioners meeting in another county, and they asked, well, compared to the rest of the region, are we providing the best services we can with this money? And I will be honest, we have a couple counties in our region that go far above just meeting the basic need. And Paula here has, if you look at her budget, she probably has the most budget lines that you've probably ever seen in a budget, because she's one of those that she'll pilot a program, she's done the transportation pilot program. Not only that, too, just like, she's the only one in the entire region that's doing a program called Options Counseling. And that's where you sit down with a client, and let's work on a plan. What do we need to do for you? So she has many services and does a very great job of spending the money and expanding services, too, with it.
Well, thank you for what you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could also, if Paula has anything that she would like to add to this?
Yep, I was. Come toot your horn.
I know, toot your own horn.
Come toot your horn.
I will have to say.
Come up, come up.
Come on, eh, girl.
I've been on Wayne County. Yes, let me just say that we don't provide services on our own. It's a collaborative thing, it's with other agencies. No one has the only piece to the puzzle. We put it together. Wages is a great agency we collaborate with to provide services for our seniors. We don't do it on our own, and I have a great team, and I'm very blessed with that. And thank you for your support, the reason we provide, the services we provide. You give above and beyond what is required to match, and that's how we're able to provide the services for the seniors, is because of you supporting us. So thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
I know you say you're new, but Wages, if you've got anything you'd like to say?
Well, I didn't really expect to say anything. My, hello. I'm Kristen Alexander. I actually came from the Lenore County Council on Aging, so I'm not new to this process. I am new to Wayne County. I am a resident of Wayne County, though. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you this coming year on the budget. And you ladies. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna leave a couple of demographic information sheets. This tells you a little bit more in-depth about your population at the bottom. It also tells you who your Aging Planning Board members are, along with the services that are provided in Wayne County at this time. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all, County. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda is a presentation from our Register of Deeds, Ms. Constance Corrigan.
Good morning.
Well, good morning.
Commissioners.
Good morning.
It is so exciting to be here. Want to say congratulations to all of you who have ventured into your new seats, wishing you well. Little bit nervous, wasn't ready to prepare in front of this TV. Thought I was gonna do stuff in 12th session. But again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you today. And as you know, the Register of Dees is an office that maintains vital information during lifetime events. We house birth, death, and marriage certificates. We provide services to the Secretary of State by way of swearing-in citizens for notaries. We house DD 214s. We record Ds, Ds of trust, UCCs, right-of-way, satisfactions, and various other essential records. The Office of Register of Dees is a place of safekeeping for information you wish to be steward for easy access. Once it is recorded, it will never go away. We are a first-to-come claim state. Unfortunately, the Wayne County office is currently not equipped to maintain electronic records or indexing, with the exception of e-recordings. In fact, we have discovered here in Wayne County, we have not been collecting the non-conforming fees that applies to documents that do not meet proper North Carolina general statutes. The county has been losing out on a substantial amount of revenue. Most of our equipment is so antiquated that making repairs has been quite challenging. Most of the parts are not easy to find and are very costly. We maintain cabinets that store plaques and demonstrate to both, and I have demonstrated to both the facilities manager and the director of IT that these cabinets are extremely hazardous to the employees obtaining, attempting to obtain records and to provide service to the community. Since my three-month tenure, I have discovered that there has been no true plan to protect the instrument stored in the Office of Register of Dees. With the assistance of Facilities, we are constantly attempting to find ways to bring the Register of Dees office to the position it should be. I have scheduled training for disaster relief this week. We have a planned premier opening for our new Register of Dees Wayne County website. This will allow citizens of Wayne to finally be able to obtain vital records online with the implementation of a service called Permanium. Facilities have installed fire hydrants and checked the sprinkler system for any necessary attention. The carpets have been shampooed, the floors buffed for the first time in years. IT and Facilities are currently working together, drawing up new ideas as we will be making dramatic changes to our office. We will be utilizing a great deal of empty space and creating two separate offices, one for vital records and the other for real estate. The vital records have not been properly attended to, not using correct paper to maintain the endurance of the record stored. Recently, we had pipes burst, and it took over an hour to get assistance with deep water covering my feet. Two deputies and I frantically assisted one another to ensure that the HO books and history was not destroyed during the water damage. We are one of the last counties in the state of North Carolina to have our records indexed and to provide vital record purchases online. The Register's office has done very little in the past few years to take the office to the 21st century. Two days ago, an extremely needed machine broke down, which again will cause some unforeseen delays. Members of staff and I are training for the COT system. This controls our daily system and stores our software communication for daily, monthly, quarterly, and yearly reports, as well as e-recorded. My greatest challenge today is getting an understanding about preparing for this year's upcoming budget. Actually, I am learning how to write my own amendments and take on firsthand reports and information that I owe to the county. Finance and purchasing have been fantastic, allowing me time to get a grip on needed information and training. The only comfort I have in this new transition is that I won't be the only individual unsure of what I am doing. The accounting system is new to the entire county of Wayne, and somehow I get a tad bit of comfort in that fact. Let me thank the county finance team for putting up with me. We are still working on some reports, but I feel confident we are going to get there. Unfortunately, my office has suffered great distress and duress. First, during the hostile transition of the past election process and the lies that were told to the staff. The ladies have had to endure some very stressful times. I would like to thank the county Commissioners for allowing my staff the opportunity, and for most of my staff, for the very first time ever as deputies, to make overtime, as we are struggling through these times. I have been blessed to have had deputies and assistants to help guide me through the process. We will find, you will find in the usage of my purchasing card that I have gone through great lengths to show my staff their work has not gone unnoticed and that they are very much appreciated. I believe the county as a whole should commend these ladies. Some days, we have been down to three staff members out of 10. We start hiring next week. We have a great number of applicants, offering diversity, and we are looking forward to our new team members. So I have said all of the above to say I have a grave concern. I have taken a position. I fought for this elected official position for three terms. I did not just fight for money or title. I fought for this position because I believe I am a good fit. And it was time for change, and despite the setbacks, the people's voices and votes were heard. A past registrar believed in me so much that she rang my doorbell and offered me an opportunity to serve the county of Wayne as a deputy. I love my job so that, so much so, that I worked myself right out of the very job I loved so dearly. As Greg Childress, Education Reporter for the NC Policy Watch wrote, "My path to victory in the 2020 Wayne County Register of Dees Contest was not at all easy. Democrats joined with the GOP to recruit writing candidates to try to defeat disfavored black candidates." Commissioner ACOC, I believe you of all people know that race is truly a problem in this county. I believe it was not, I believe if it was not due to my, I believe it was not due to my lack of experience that you made your decision to reduce my salary. It was because I am a black woman. Every Commissioner sitting in your seats today have had, have had their first few months in your office, and none of you were penalized for not having, not, none of you were penalized for your unawares. A couple of you made a decision in November of 2020 to cut my pay. You claim you only took a little more than $20,000. I do, I do not believe, I do not believe, had either of the other two candidates obtained this seat, this conversation would not be mentioned today. In the article, it goes on to say that the current pay plan was adopted in July of 2015. Yet, in your budget meeting held July 2019, my position was an NG, which is a not, not a grade. Both the, okay, let it go. Your deputy sheriffs make grade 80, $65,000 to $101,000, and they work for the county. I can only imagine what the sheriff's income is. He was placed as a grade 85, making anywhere from was placed as a grade 85, making anywhere from $83,000 to $129,000. By the way, he didn't have any experience either when he became sheriff. While I was placed as a grade 72, making between 44K and 68,000, neither of us are employees of Wayne County. We are both elected officials of Wayne County. In an article written by Cara Mazani, and I'm sure I'm mispronouncing that name, of the UNC School of Government, wrote, "The budget ordinance must continue to be balanced and must adhere to all requirements set forth in General Statutes 159-13. Except under limited circumstances, a governing board may not increase or decrease the unit's property tax rates during the fiscal year. General Statutes 153A through 92 provides that a county board of commissioners may not reduce the salary allowances or other compensation paid to an elected official by the people for the duties of his or her elective office. If the reduction is to take effect during the term of office, which the incumbent officer has been elected, only if the officer agrees to the reduction. This provision prohibits a county board of commissioners from decreasing individuals' salaries and stipends during their current term of office, even by a majority vote, unless the individuals agree to the reduction. Even if the change is adopted in annual budget ordinance, General Statutes 160A through 64 states that the salary of an elected official other than a member of the council may not be reduced during the then-current term of office unless he or she agrees thereto. General Statutes 159, Article 10, "The Board of Commissioners may not reduce the salary allowances or other compensation paid to an officer elected by the people for the duties of his or her elective office if the reduction is to take effect during the term of office for which the incumbent officer has been elected, unless the officer agrees to the reduction or unless the local government commission pursuant to Chapter 159, Article 10, orders a reduction. During the year of a general election, the Board of Commissioners may reduce the salary allowances or other compensation of an officer to be elected at the general election only in accordance with this subdivision. The Board of Commissioners shall bring resolution to give notice of intention to make the reduction, not later than 14 days before the last day for filing notice of candidacy for the office. The resolution shall set for the reduced salary allowances and other compensation and shall provide the reduction is to be, is to take effect at the time the person elected to office in the general election takes office. Once adopted, the resolution not, may not be altered until the person elected to the office in the general election has taken office. The filing fee for the office shall be determined by reference to the reduced salary." There was no reduction in my filing fee. "If the Board of Commissioner reduces the salaries, allowances, or other compensation of employees assigned to an office elected by the people, and the reduction does not apply to all county offices and departments, the elected officer involved must approve the reduction. If the elected officer refuses to approve the reduction, he or she and the Board of Commission shall meet and attempt to reach an agreement." In the ROD's handbook, it states 1.5.2, "The salaries of the registrar and the registrar's employees are established by the Board of Commissioners under their statutory authority to set the salaries of all county officers. To protect the elected registrar's independence during a term, the Board of County Commissioners is prohibited from reducing an incumbent registrar's salary during the term unless the registrar agrees to the reduction or the local government commission orders it because of a financial emergency. To reduce the future salary of a registrar running for reelection, the commissioners must by resolution give notice of intent to do so, not later than 14 days before the last day for filing notice of candidacy for the office." Since the day I started, which was December 15, 2020, I worked nearly every day, including weekends and holidays. My day generally begins at 7:00 in the morning and ends at 7:00 in the evening. This includes no lunches or breaks. Every document in the Office of Register of Dees has my name on it. It cannot go out of that office without my name on it. So, there is nothing that can leave the office without my name on it, whether it be by, by stamp or by signature. This is one reason you are receiving budget amendments that I have signed for and not, that I've signed for. To insinuate that I do not deserve this position, to insinuate that I do not deserve what this position would pay if I were white is not fair to me, nor the people I represent. If anything goes wrong in the Office of Register of Dees, I will be responsible. Heck, I can even get sued, even if, even if it's actually not my fault. If disaster occurs, I will be the first person in this county that people will be coming to to try to find out how we can resolve that issue. My responsibilities to this county have not been reduced because I have a new position. My responsibilities to this county remain the same as the prior registrats. In closing, yes, I'm going through a rough period, but when citizens of Wayne call me, show up, and share how proud they are of me and the efforts that I have maintained, that makes all that does not go as I desire extremely worthwhile. The community continues to pray for me and my staff. We are frontline workers. We deserve to be respected. We are each overworked and underpaid. We take chances every day we walk into that office, whether it be COVID, an outraged companion, or a local public individual wishing to take their anger out on somebody. As long as I allow God to guide my footsteps and give me the strength and knowledge to continue our paths, we will make this county proud of the decision that the majority of the citizens of Wayne chose. I am asking that you reconsider your decision to keep my salary reduced, make my upgrade retroactive, let's put all this behind us, let's work out a decision that works for you, the county commissioners, and me, the elected official serving this county. This is my official notice that I am not in agreement with the decision that you have made to reduce my salary. Once again, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you, and do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just like to say, thank you for what you've been doing so far in the Register of Dees. I know it's been challenging for you. It's not, wasn't an easy transition for you. I watched your transition, in that I see that you're trying to integrate new things and bring on new technology. I know that's not easy. I just know it hasn't been an easy task, period, with the harassment and everything that you've been going through. I agree with you on, on your salary. Hopefully, we can come up with something better. And hopefully, we'll be discussing that as a, as a board soon, and we'll work things out, make things smoother in the future, and work with you on everything that you need to do, so your office moves smoothly, you hit the employees that you need, you know, just everything. I don't think it's been a hassle in the past. I don't think it should be a hassle right now or in the future moving forward, you know? So, I think we should all work together, and that's what we're here for. You know, you are an elected official, and, you know, we have to respect that regardless, no matter what. We don't, we don't all have to like each other, but we have to respect each other, you know? And we have to respect the fact that the people wanted you here, just as well as any, any of us, you know? So, once again, I thank you for what you've done. I thank you for just enduring the hardships, you know, staying strong, and continue to do your job regardless, no matter what. That's the main thing.
Thank you, Senator.
And thank your staff also.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any question?
Yes. I mean, it's, it's, it's two parts. It's a statement as well as a question. In my opinion, if, the first question is to the staff, did we, according to the general statute, did we change this salary in the proper timeframe? Because I understood there is 14 days, 14 days before the last day of filing notice of candidacy, that it must be changed. So, that would mean it would have been changed in, in November, I mean, December 6. Did that happen? And we can, we can talk about this later, but I just want to get some clarity, you know?
The salary was not changed. The sheriff and the register of deeds were put online, just as, as Coram has said. She's, I think she said first that when she looked at it, initially, it was NG, which was not on grade. It's now been put on grade. That is allowed by the general statutes, and the people at the school of government have said that county commissioners have that right. That was done before she was sworn in.
That was done before she was sworn in?
But it was not done in the proper time that the statute states.
The statute talks about changing a salary, but it didn't change the salary. It put you on, on grade. It put the registrar and the sheriff on grade.
The sheriff is on grade at, at, which we should not be, because we are not employees of the, of the county. We are elected.
The general statutes allow the county commissioners to do that.
But, and then, and it was my understanding from county manager Honeycutt, that after you all decided in 2020 to change my, and you did change my salary, because according to the records that you, that Commissioner Akot has provided, Ms. Harrison was getting over $60,000. So, not only did my status get changed, but also my, my, my salary was changed. And so, and, and as you agree, that is not what the general statutes states. It states that you have 14 days after the election process to change the salary. And from what I understand, according to county manager, it was his decision to put me in that category of 43, while yet the sheriff's department was in 80. And I, I think that is unfair to me, and I don't think that you follow the guidelines.
No, ma'am, I do need to, to state that the Board of Commissioners on November 17 put you in the grade of 72. And then, when you came on, we looked at your experience, because there is a entry, there's a mid-level, and then there's a high level. So, when you came on after that was put, that, that I placed you, because that's my responsibility at that point, is to, to be responsible for the paying class, is that we put you where, at least I felt, that your experience fell in that grade.
So, when you came on board, did you feel that it was necessary for your salary to be reduced because you didn't have the experience?
My salary was reduced because I didn't have the experience from the past manager.
Quick, let me interrupt real quick. I'm sorry.
No.
But the thing, this, this is it, and, and, and we just cut to it, and then we have to sit and make some decisions. At the end of the day, it's an elected position. It's not, it's not, it's not technically a job that you hired her for, or any of us hired her here for. So, therefore, in any elected position, whether it's me or anybody else sitting at this board, Mr. Bell sat here for years before I sat here. I don't think that, I'm new to this. I was city council before, but this is my first time being a county commissioner. We still get paid exactly the same. It's not because, oh, well, he said he gets more money or anything, because it's an elected position. And I think that that's the problem that we're having here for me. It's an elected position, so therefore, that salary should be set at this amount, and that's it, because her job doesn't lessen because of her years' experience. She had to come in and do exactly what the previous register, register D was doing, if not more, because of all the difficulties that, that she went through. So, that's the problem that I'm having with it. And then that, you know, in any other years, if there wasn't any grade for the register of dees, why is there a grade now, once it changed hands to Ms. Coram? So, there, there are a lot of issues there that I'm having. I don't know if it's because of race or because of whatever, but I just know the challenges that Ms. Coram went through to get to where she is. So, that's the problem that I'm having, and that's what we need to address, because, once again, it's an elected position. Why, why does years of experience count? If it counted, then she wouldn't have been up the room. You see what I'm saying? Like, that's just, we, we can look at our past president, zero experience. President of the United States, his salary didn't drop, because he, you know, so why should hers? She's an elected person, just like any, any of us sitting here at this table or anybody, anybody else across the board. And that, that, that doesn't change because of your experience. That pay grade doesn't change. So, that's the problem that I have. The way that it was done, I have some problems with it as well, some things we, we, at some point, we'll probably have to speak in closed session about, because I have a lot of questions. But I think that we need to give Ms. Constance her fair share of what she should be paid for what she is doing. I don't know if it's, I mean, to sit and try to save $20,000 a year, and, and, and for, for what, when she deserves it? She's doing the same exact job, and that's the problem that I have. I don't know if this may end up in a lawsuit. There's been people across, this is not the first time this has happened with the register deeds. We, we, we both know that. So, are we going to sit here and act like, oh, this is just fine? You know, I think you worked at a previous county that that happened. So, we have to be honest and be straight up with what's going on here. I don't want to do a lot of back and forth. I just want to get it settled, let Ms. Constance do her job, give her the things that we're, that we're supposed to give her, because we have it to this point. We know that. She didn't even have a stamp coming into the office. When, when you knew she needed a stamp, the past register of dees knew she needed a stamp, but nobody did it. We were rewarded, the past register of dees, for walking out and not even bringing this lady in properly. And she got a plaque for that. So, it's a lot of problems that I have. So, that's it.
Any other question?
I got one question. You mentioned the filing fee, right? I don't know what you make. Ain't none of my business, or it is, the public record, but anyway. We need to check and see what the filing fee was, because if, I think it's, I mean, I may be totally wrong, but I think it's a 1%.
1%.
1% of the salary.
Which I do have.
Oh, you got it?
Yes, $460 was the filing fee.
So, that's $46,000. Okay. Is that?
But again.
I'm not gonna ask, I mean.
Again, that was, that was the filing fee, but that was not the, that was not the rate of the salary of the previous registrar, and that's the issue here.
Okay. But it, but it is 1%.
1%, 1% of the, of the filing fee. And whenever I had written previously, I don't know why I thought I paid 495. And it was brought to my attention to check my records, and it was that the filing fee, I am getting 1%, but I am not getting the salary that the previous registrar was getting.
Okay. I just, I'd make sure, I'd make sure I understood. I didn't know exactly what the.
But, yeah, I mean, you got to think about this. Ms. Harrison paid the same exact filing fee, correct?
Exactly.
Oh, did she?
Has she been here? She wouldn't, she wouldn't have been getting paid. So, that technically is not something that you can use, because she paid the same exact filing fee. The filing fee is the same for no matter who you are. So, her years of experience, it wasn't, whatever her salary, wasn't 1% of the 60-some thousand that she was, she was getting, it was 1% of the 46,000. So, it's still the same regardless.
So, filing fee is, is the same for all, whatever?
Yeah, for all cases. So, it doesn't matter. Yeah, for all cases, so it doesn't matter.
And if the salary was going to decrease, the filing fee had to decrease, and that did not happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ma'am, I have a question pertaining to the staff currently and their salaries, your staff.
We are the worst paid in the county.
And that's what I want to, I want to see a study done comparatively to other departments so that we can kind of try to keep her with some staff because I understand staff are leaving for higher-paid positions.
Correct.
And we need the registered deeds to work, doesn't matter who's there. I think that, you know, people need, you know, a living wage on some level that can keep them in that position. So if we can do a study comparatively...
We can offer that, if you talk about HR today, that would be our HR department.
That'd be, well, that'd be great. That'd be great.
But I was also looking into changing the, trying to upgrade the titles, you know what I'm talking about, when you change the status of, when you're...
Right, looking at changing classifications.
That's it, as you did me. Yes, to give them better pay. There was a horrendous lie that I was going to come in and fire everyone, and one of the candidates did admit that I had not said that to her. And why she chose to do it, I don't know because she too would have been facing exactly what I'm facing today. I don't think that she realized whenever, when they, I don't think they realized that whenever they were adding that kind of fear into the staff, that it was going to affect whoever took office because everybody started leaving.
Well, I would like to, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, you know, see what we could do pertaining to the study and, you know, and try to address the salary concerns that Ms. Coram has within, you know, the next commissioner meeting, have some type of understanding where we're going pertaining to this issue.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parker. All of these changes have been made at budget time. Am I not correct?
Generally, if you were going to raise somebody's salary, you would normally do it at budget time.
But wouldn't you also do it, you would wait until budget time to decrease someone's salary? According to the general statutes that I've read to you, several different, it states that, and if you're going to decrease the salary of the registered deeds, then you would need to decrease every other department in Wayne County's salary as well. I thank you so much, unless you have some more?
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Coram.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for all you've done and being a woman. You know, the only thing I have here is, you know, racist. I am not a racist person. I'm a woman just like you. I've had to come up and work through different things. And like Mr. Foster said, we would definitely look at this, but working with this board here, I don't think that was anything to do with what happened here, it was before I got here. But I really don't think that was the reason. I mean, I think maybe there's just some misunderstandings how policy is supposed to be. I don't know. But as, you know, Mr. Foster said, you know, it's something we need to look at. And I do support the registered deeds, I do support your staff, and hope we could come to some, you know, meeting on getting this resolved because I don't want anybody to think that we're racist in any way because I don't think we are by working with everybody on this board. Our intent is to do the best we can for Wayne County and provide the best service we can for Wayne County. And that comes from everybody elected because we're elected, as Mr. Foster said. And so, we got to do the best we can to make sure everything is done properly. And I do thank you for coming today and enlighten us in how you feel.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else?
I'd like to get from our attorney, when he gets the opportunity, to cite the statute that you were expressing so that I can have a clear understanding of that. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? We do thank you for coming today, but in your opening statement, you basically called me a racist, and I find that offensive.
I did not call you racist. You publicly put on paper that there is no racism in Wayne County, and that is far, 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 far from the truth.
Well...
And I did not call you racist, but I do, but there is racism in this county, and for us to act as though it is not indicates that we still have an issue.
Well, I certainly wouldn't argue to that point, but I think anyone in Wayne County, I turned 75 years old this past Sunday. Anybody that knows me knows that I was not raised as a racist, and the way you worded it, I took it that you were, basically called me racist, and I am not. I was raised during segregation, but I was not raised as a racist. If I cut my finger and you cut your finger, we both going to bleed red.
That's true.
We're all God's children.
That's true.
And as far as me speaking for everybody, I cannot. Is there racist people? Yes. But I want to make it very clear, I am not one of them.
And if you took offense to what I said, I apologize for the way of which it was presented.
Okay.
So I want to make that clear because we are, we must learn how to work together. No matter what my salary winds up being, I have taken an oath of office, and I assure you that once I leave office, whenever that time shall be, it will never be left as the position was left for me. And I, again, and I will continue to stand on the fact, and I appreciate what you said, Madam Commissioner, but I do not believe, had Judy Harrison or Tina Arden won this seat, that there will be any conflict of interest and there would not have been a reduction of pay.
Okay.
I really thank you all so much for your time.
And thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We have several this morning. We met a couple weeks ago, and we would wish to appoint Adrian Worrell to the Wayne UNC Health Board of Directors as recommended by their board, and as a form of a motion.
Chair, I have a couple of issues I have with that. First and foremost, Mr. Worrell sits on the Wayne Community Board. I find it quite insulting to all the citizens around Wayne County that one person would be serving on two boards when we have thousands of citizens here that are capable of serving on a board. I'm pretty sure probably across Wayne County, he might be the only person that's going to be appointed to two boards, which seems very unusual to me. When I was at the city, that wasn't allowed to have one person sitting on two different boards. I don't know what the policies are here, but I don't like it. Just not even, he is a citizen of District 3. I know plenty of other capable citizens in District 3 that could serve on that board as well. I understand we want to work with the hospital and their board, but I think also the hospital needs to work with us in giving enough diversity, enough different backgrounds or whatever it may be for those others to serve on the board. You know, it's like, okay, you're giving your input on that board, on the Wayne Community Board, now you're giving your input on the health, on the UNC Board. I think that's just too much, you know? We have other citizens that need to give their input on that board, and I think this needs to go back to them, and that needs to be stated. You know, I really, really, really seriously have a problem with this, and I think as a board, we should not vote to have one person sitting on two boards. Like I said, I don't know if it's any legal laws of that, but at the city, when I was a councilman for years, that was. If it's not, that might be something that we need to look at. We just don't need to have one person sitting on two boards. It's plenty of other citizens that need their input on what's going on at the hospital from all kinds of levels, you know? I mean, you know, so I just, I just don't, I don't agree with this at all.
Any other comments? I have a motion on the floor. With the pleasure of the board, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. All opposed? Five to two, right. All right, we've got the following, as recommended by the Malala Planning Board to appoint Bruce Walls Jr. Can I do all these at one time? Jim Lambert, George Futral, Gerald Bale, Kendall Lee, Linda Boykin, Edna Pride, and Hunter Bailey to the Malala Planning Board, and that's a form of a motion. I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. All opposed? And their attorney is Carol Turner, but he's not appointed. They just want to point it out. And that's all we have, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gerlach.
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The board is where we went over all nine items of the consent agenda at our pre-commissioners' meeting, and if there's any questions, please let us know, but if not, we'd like to present this for your approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as written. I have a motion that we approved the consent agenda. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Consent agenda approved. Mr. Honeycutt, new business?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First, we'll have a presentation by our finance director, Allison State, of quarterly financial statement for the county of Wayne for fiscal year 2021 through December 31st, 2020. Thank you, Allison. I do want to say this for Allison. With everything that Allison has going on between software implementation and budget and CIP and everything else, Allison has worked extremely hard to get this presentation ready today, but a lot of time, I think she said she got finished at about midnight last night. So I do want to thank Allison and Angie for all the work that they have done. Really, there's been a lot on them as we're getting into budget season, but I did want to publicly thank you for that.
And she's still smiling.
And she's still smiling.
I opened the numbers out.
And I also want to commend you. You may not have had to work those extra hours on your report if you had to have been busy helping someone else.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I do say, I have a good staff. I have a very good staff, so I'm blessed, like Paula said earlier.
You gave your numbers off long, it was plenty for the one o'clock this morning. So, give her a break.
So the first set of financials I'm going to present to you are the county's financials, and this is for July through December. So it is a little delayed because of our software implementation, so I usually try to get these to you a little bit sooner, and hopefully the next round will be a little bit sooner. Let me see here. So what I like to do is, I'll present, I will give you all a full financial report for both the September quarters and the December quarters, but it's a lot of numbers, and, you know, I like to make numbers say something and be fun, you know, and not just boring numbers. So I like to just bring out attention to our major areas of concern or major areas of budget revenues or expenditures that I feel like you all would be interested in, and then I'll give you the full reports. I'll probably give them to Carol to pass out to you, and then if you have any questions, as always, please feel free to ask. So this is on our property tax revenues, and this is covering both real estate and vehicle. And on our property tax, which is, I'm focusing on real estate tax, we have collected $37.7 million to date, which is roughly about 75% of our budget. Now, at December, we're 50% of the way through, so that sounds like a lot, but typically, most of our collections do come in by December, January, and that kind of thing. And sometimes we do have a little bit of a timing issue in those months because you may have a large utility service provider that pays early or pays late one year, so we have had that happen before. But even as I ran our reports to date, I mean, our taxes are coming in really well. Alan and his staff do a really good job. Our collection rates are high. And so, we are running ahead of prior year collections by about $378,000, and our delinquent collections are up over prior year. On vehicle taxes, we have collected $3.5 million to date. Now, to give you a brief overview on vehicle taxes, for those of you who may or may not know, the state took over the collection of our vehicle taxes, and that's through the state tax and tag program. That program has been in place for, it's probably been several years now. So what that actually did was it took the collection piece and consolidated it with the registration of vehicles, and then it also greatly helped with our delinquency collections. So on vehicles, when you get your full report from me, you'll see there's not a lot of delinquent vehicle collections. And that is because when they register to, when they register to get their car registration renewed, they have to pay those taxes before they can get that. So it's really helped our collection rate tremendously on vehicles. So we've collected about $3.5 million to date, about $295,000 more than last time. So we are slightly ahead of budgeted projections, and again, delinquent collections are slow. In fact, I probably won't even put them on your reports anymore because I think we're like down to $1,000 a year or something. It's really minor. Sales tax revenues. So this is a chart of the last year and a half of sales tax revenues by month, and this is, we have four articles of sales tax, and this is all four articles combined. And as you can see, our sales tax has remained pretty strong even through the pandemic. And so when we budgeted for this fiscal year, there was just a lot of uncertainty about how to budget for sales taxes. There was a lot of anticipation that there was going to be some heavy economic impact on those, and thankfully, we did not see the impact that we thought we would. I think that we can be very thankful for the legislation that passed with Wayfair that allowed us to collect taxes on online sales, and I think that's made a huge difference during this pandemic. We've collected $12.9 million to date, which is an increase of $954,000 over this time last year. So overall, we've collected 61.5% of our budget halfway through the year, so we anticipate to be able to finish out pretty strong with sales taxes. This chart represents collections through December of 2020, and whenever I do, as we move into budget, I will keep you updated on how sales taxes are doing because that is a good chunk of revenue for us.
Why do you think we've, I mean, do you think it's because more homes are being sold and people are buying vehicles? I noticed the vehicle tax is even higher.
Well, actually, when people purchase vehicles, that unfortunately, that sales tax gets deposited into the state Department of Transportation fund, so we don't get that, unfortunately. I'll be honest with you, from everything I've read, I think one of the biggest contributing factors is that we now receive sales tax off of online sales. And so if that legislation hadn't passed when it did, and I think it was like 2018, does that sound right? I think we would be in a much different position because even when people were not able to go to stores, they were able to shop online. And so us being allowed to get a portion of, our fair share portion of that, has really enabled us to kind of remain constant and even have growth during this pandemic. So everything I've read kind of points to that being one of the biggest factors, for North Carolina at least.
I think for a long time, we couldn't even collect sales tax off of online sales.
Right. It was very, it was very spotty, you know? I guess some of them self-reported and things like that. And it's across the state, so it's not just us, it's not just a certain location of counties, it's across the state. When we did our budget projections, everyone was just, you know, sort of terrified about what we were going to do with sales taxes. And so we kind of took a middle-of-the-road approach and just held it constant with our projections, and we've been very pleasantly surprised, so.
Nice surprise.
Yes. It is nice to get a, to get a good surprise.
Mr. Chairman, and while we're on that subject, I think we really need to thank our legislators for recognizing that in two years, putting that statute in place requiring online... for recognizing that in two years, putting that statute in place requiring online sales to actually collect sales tax. Because when we were doing the budget last year, we felt like that sales would go down dramatically because people couldn't get out and shop. Fortunately, our legislators had some foresight to put that in place because that bridged the gap, because people were shopping online, and this law kicked in and restored those sales taxes to it. A big thank you to our legislators.
And I think you'll see too, whenever I go over the tourism reports, and I know Mr. Daughtry, you were on that board, and now Ms. Akok, you are, you'll see that the tourism industry isn't, isn't holding steady during, they didn't hold steady during that time, they really suffered a loss, and that's that in-person interaction, you know, so I think that's exactly right, that's benefited us greatly on the sales tax side. I wanted, I don't always do this, but I felt like this might be a good chance to explain from our audit presentation that was done by Number Shear last time, a little bit about the numbers and the numbers behind the numbers. Our audit is a large document, and there's a lot of things that go into it. We actually have to report a couple of different ways, the same sort of numbers, and that makes it really confusing because you see a number on one schedule and then it doesn't match on the next schedule. It's really confusing unless you just have a really good knowledge of those statements. So I wanted to go into what I thought you might most be interested in, and this is our June 30, 2020 audited fund balance. Now, this is the fund balance that represents governmental funds. Governmental funds are not general fund. It includes the general fund, but it includes much more than that. And that's important because what you see on that statement is the governmental fund number, and it's a much larger number than what I give you as unassigned fund balance. So the governmental fund balance, I've broken out between the types of funds that make up that number. So the general fund obviously is the largest portion of that, it's almost 70%. We have special revenue funds that make up that number, and those are things that are supported by a specific stream of revenue that you can only spend money on a certain thing. So like our CARES money went into a special revenue fund, our fire district tax collections, streetlights, street assessments, those are all special revenue funds. Then you have capital project funds that make up a chunk of this, and that is, of course, when I present to you a capital project ordinance to set up a multi-year project, that's where these, that's where those projects go. There's a tiny sliver that really the chart couldn't even register that's called a permanent fund, and that fund is actually for services on aging. That was an endowment left to services on aging for the interest to be spent on services on aging activities. It's a small balance, but it does have to be reserved for those activities only, and we have to report it separately. So I wanted you to see that even though you can't see the number, it's there. So what I'm doing on the next slide is I'm going to take that general fund portion that you see, which is what we can do something with, and I'm going to break it out on the next slide. So our total fund balance on the general fund is $36.7 million roughly. Now, out of that, you have restrictions, and fund balance can be classified into all these different categories, restrictions, commitments, assignments, and they are determined, restrictions are determined by things like outside grant restrictions, state statute, things like that, that we don't have any control over, that you as a board really don't have any control over. And these things are things that kind of reduce your unassigned fund balance. Then you have things that you take action on as a board, that you commit monies for, things like public schools and community colleges, and that's what you see the committed for. The remainder is sort of an informal designation, it's called assigned for. Subsequent year's expenditures would be things that were going on at June 30 that didn't quite get completed, so we had to move it over to the next year. But we don't want to, we don't want to obligate it in the next year's budget because it's really going to be spent. Then you have donations, and then I have a set, the last piece is the working fund balance policy. So I'm going to spend a minute talking about that because I want to make sure you understand what I mean by working fund balance policy. That is a policy that you as a board set, and right now, the policy is 14% of general fund expenditures. Now, if for some reason you decided or voted to go into that amount, you would have to set a plan to determine how to pay that back, but it's all board governed. That 14% is made up of what you see there for the number for working fund balance policy, and then the very top number stabilization by state statute. So the working fund balance policy is not separate from that, it includes stabilization by state statute, which is a legally required amount that we have to set aside. After you subtract all of those obligations, then you have a total unassigned fund balance, and unfortunately, it's not close to that top number because you have a lot of things that it's obligated for, but we do have a total unassigned fund balance at June 30 of $5.76 million. That's rough, that's pretty close to what I projected, I think, back in May. A lot of that is money that we received back from debt proceeds when we took out our loan in, I think it was August or September, for the $10 million set of projects that we did. So that $5.76 million is over and above any legally required amounts that you have to set aside, any board designated required amounts, anything like that. So I wanted to make sure that I explained that going into budget, because what I'll do at this point, this is a number at June 30, 2020, and I will, in the next month and a half, I'll start looking at a annualized amount of our revenues and expenditures, and I'll give you an estimate of what I think we will add to or take away from that amount. I suspect it'll be adding to this year, but that'll give you an idea of what you have to work with for upcoming projects and things like that that you prioritize as a board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to dig a little deeper in regards to this. You're basically stating here that we've got, as of June 30, this is audit report, right?
Right.
So eight months ago, we had $5.7 million, that was unassigned fund balance. I want to talk a little bit about this working fund balance policy, and counsel, if you would follow me here and kind of give me some advice, because I think the board members need to understand that stabilization, the top line here states that stabilization by state statute requires us to be $10 million in reserves. In addition to that was this next line item, which was working fund balance policy. The commissioners at some point, some years ago, established a working fund balance policy, which stated that an additional 6% would be in fact placed in reserves. Now, these were commissioners, I don't know who they were, some years back, establishing that.
But it was smart, right?
They established a working fund balance policy of an additional 6%. That is governed by the new board or any future board.
That is correct.
That is correct. And even though the policy states that if you reduce that, you must have a plan to restore it, that also is controlled by the board.
That is correct.
So it's nice to have those additional reserves, but I think the board needs to be aware that by placing them in there and setting those dollars aside, there may be an occasion where the board may need to possibly tap into those funds for whatever reason. I caution you to do it, but I want to make sure that everybody on this board recognizes that flexibility is there. Would we all agree with that? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It was done, the recommendation of David Porter, your financial advisors.
Agreed, agreed.
And what I, to add to that a little bit more, of course, we work with them closely during budget time anyway to help us prepare a capital, an overall capital plan, but they have a very good knowledge of if you made changes or if you made a decision to go into that policy a little bit and change it, or whatever your decision might be, they can give you sort of the thoughts they have or maybe observations they've had about how that affects going into the debt market and things like that.
I want to kind of link it in to kind of like the Wayne County's rainy day fund. And I think that's similar to what the state has in regards to our rainy day fund. There might be an occasion at some point in the future that you would have to tap into that. Just the way I'm looking at it is a rainy day fund.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other questions on that slide? And I'm not going to bore you with accounting lingo, but I feel like I should at least inform you of some of these things. During our software changes, we did do some cleanup of our accounts and funds, and I really want you to know that because especially if you've looked at our prior financial reports, you may see things consolidated that weren't before. This is simply just a cleanup to make easier reporting. It in no way means that we cannot dive deep into those details at your request. So I want to make sure you know that flexibility is still there. This was basically just, our chart of accounts was huge, with thousands and thousands of accounts, and we're trying, we were just trying to clean it up a bit. So I've got a list of the funds that we merged with the general fund. We combined our individual fire department funds, which were about 20-some different funds into one fund, and we still have the same reporting capabilities and things like that, it's just, it's easier, it's easier from a maintenance standpoint on finance to keep up our chart of accounts.
So my understanding on that, you basically have one fund, but a separate number for each one of the departments, so you are still accounting for each department?
Yes, we still keep, we still account for their cash balances separate, their taxes, all of that separately.
It just has a different number.
Exactly. Correct, that's right.
Just make sure we're just not going into one big.
Oh, no.
Just make sure that's clear.
Yes, I promise we are still keeping them very separate. And then we did the same with the streetlight funds. We also, per, I think it was an informal audit recommendation, another recommendation maybe, to close out extraneous bank accounts that we really just didn't have to have, you know, it could be combined with our main account, and so we did do that with a few of these just for ease of reporting. It also cuts back a little bit on your fees because it's one less account you have to worry about. So we did close out a few of these accounts. Payroll is not closed out, is closed into our main account so that we don't have to keep track of two separate bank accounts there. Tracking is still individualized, and reporting is still going to be individualized, but it's just saving us a little bit on fees and things like that.
I got a question.
Sure.
On the streetlight fund, what is that?
So that is, that's separate from the street road assessments. These are three neighborhoods, I believe, that had.
Public energy.
Light poles run out there, I believe. And so we did a streetlight assessment fund for that, and I think it's, I think it'll go on forever probably as far as.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parker. The city annexed the property.
Fallen, procured.
And then they de-annexed it. When it was annexed into the city, the city started paying the streetlights. When they de-annexed it, the citizens had to go back and start paying it, and that's for the assessment.
Actually, they put in the streetlights, the city did, because they want any streetlights out just a few. And that street, I was just making sure that's what it was, so that's actually assessed per property, okay? Because I've had some phone calls about similar situation, okay? Just make sure, thank you.
Yeah, we do not provide that as a service.
Well, I know that, but I just want to know, when I saw that come up, you know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all I have for you. I do want to add one more piece of information that I didn't put in my presentation. This is for Mr. Daughtry, he like, he's requested it before in the past, I almost forgot it. The Maxwell Center occupancy tax that we received from the City of Goldsboro, so we have this combined agreement with the City of Goldsboro as part of the Tourism Authority, and there's 6% total occupancy tax in Wayne County, including the City of Goldsboro. They have five, we have one. It is a very creative structure that that, that 6% is split out, but we do receive 2% of it for operations and things like that to go towards the Maxwell Center. And so quarter, quarter to date, we've received $224,942. Now, it is a direct reflection of the occupancy tax revenues received, so because those revenues are not as high due to the pandemic, our monies are not going to be as high as they have been in the past, so I think we'll probably be about $40,000 short for the year. Does that make sense?
So about 20% off, or 18% off.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's, I think, I think we've got three quarters in there, so when I annualized it, that would, that would leave us about $40,000 less than what we projected. But it's picking up, so I hope we'll see a pretty good rebound in the next year, year and a half.
It ain't just been in some areas, though.
Yeah, yeah, it really isn't.
Somebody's taken a leap.
What was it, previous year, I'm sorry, what was it, previous year, I think?
Um.
Before COVID?
I want to say it was about $350,000 for the year, and we'll hit, we'll hit 300 for this year. That's a, that's a rough estimate, but I think that's right.
Not as bad as it could have been.
No, it's not.
It's not.
It ain't bad as it is in Carter County, I'm sure.
And again, for explanation a little bit in regards to our new members, it was a complicated plan. And it was complicated because we wanted to make sure that if we went into the so-called civic center business of having a civic center, having the Maxwell Center, that we provided a funding stream to offset a large portion of its ongoing cost of operation. Now, it does not address the mortgage on it, the payment of it, but it does address the ongoing operations, and you will find that between the tourism tax and the dollars that they were generating there at the Maxwell Center, that last year, it actually was basically net even, broke even, and which is unheard of of civic center, conference centers.
Just operational.
Just operational, it does not account for the loan payments.
But that was, that was better than what we anticipated.
Now, this year, undoubtedly since it's been closed, it's going to be hard to do that, but going forward, that agreement, we need to make sure that going forward, that we hold the city to that agreement, and then at the end of the 20 years, it reverts back to a lower portion coming to the county.
Right, that's right.
At the end of 20 years.
Okay. When is that 20th year? Seventeen more years?
We're at 2%, oh, we're, okay, so where tourism started in 16, so you're looking at like 2036. Unfortunately, I think I'll still be here when it runs out.
I won't.
So that kind of leads right into my presentation on the Tourism Authority. This is a short presentation, but if you have any questions, please let me know. This is our second quarter date highlights. So tourism, we, they collect the money at the hotels, and then they have until the 20th of the next month to send that money to us, so we are constantly one month in arrears, kind of works like sales tax, just not quite as lengthy. Our revenues are, at December, we're $93,000, slightly ahead of budget, but our collections year over year are down about 16.7%. And again, that isn't as bad as we've seen in some other places. We did have our audit presented at the, I think it was at the February meeting, January or February, we received an unmodified opinion on the 1920 audit. Our collections finished out at June 30, 2020, above budget by $7,500. Our fund balance decreased by $12,500, but that was due to a planned use of fund balance, and that was for some very specific marketing contracts and legal fees. Those legal fees were to obtain a trademark on the Totally Fly trademark campaign that you've seen, so the Tourism Authority actually owns that trademark. I believe there's two different classes it's in. The, we're working on the 21-22 budget estimates. I do, I mean, based on some of the numbers that Ashlyn, our Tourism Director, has looked at, it is going to be a slower recovery, so we are, we are budgeting conservatively on this. But we may have some dollars coming from other places like CARES money and things like that that we hadn't anticipated. I think Ashlyn has received some already, and we anticipate we may receive some more. Still not a final decision on that, and I don't know how much. But that, that is all I have for you on the county and tourism, but if you have any questions on either, I'll be glad to. But if you have any questions on either, I'll be glad to answer them.
On the traveling tourism, correct me if I'm wrong, Allison. The figures that she's giving you, that is true for the occupancy tax at the hotels. That is a true figure. But keep in mind, we, this is a military community. If our force uses a lot of hotel rooms, they do not pay occupancy tax. So that's, you know, you think that with the number of hotels and rooms we've got, that figure might be low. Just keep in mind that the federal government does not pay occupancy tax.
And, and obviously, as, as events are picking up and things like that, if we have the Wings Over Wayne event thing, you know, that's really going to help our collections pick up. So I hope that we're not as slow to recover as what they're anticipating.
And that's why the hotel out there at the Maxwell Center is so important, because if you have some Maxwell Center revenues as well as occupancy tax.
That was a good plug. All right, if there's no other questions, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Allison, for both of that. And then number three, we have discussion of funding for communities with ditches that repeatedly back up with water flood as requested by Commissioner Antonia Williams. Commissioner?
Thank you, sir. Maybe if we could wait up maybe a minute for our other commissioner to get here. I don't want him to miss, miss out on this. And in the meantime, Ms. Carol, if you're able to show the images, it would be great.
Yes, sir. Just so you know, these, the pictures are very small.
They're very small, I see.
And if I enlarge them anymore, they become very distorted.
Okay. Well, well, I think that, yeah, I think that's pretty good if you can, a little bit bigger. Yeah, overall, the pictures that she has is what Ms. Deborah, she lives in Rolandwood. And she actually was here, but she couldn't stay. And we also have in attendance, we have some other citizens that live in Rolandwood, and they experienced the flooding as well. Funding ditches with extreme flooding, it's a pilot program that I'm suggesting to this board. Throughout our county, there are needs in regards to our communities. Citizens that have exhausted all means trying on their own to resolve flooding of ditches and protecting their properties. Some have relied on their personal funds to try to resolve this issue. Some families have had to evacuate because the flooding had caused rest of loss of life. Some citizens I see here today. Others have contacted DOT and Sewell and Conservation with no resolve. Some are widows or just don't have the resources to address their problem. Most are retired and in their late 70s that have invested all their lives in our county. Standing water is a huge health concern as they breed mosquitoes. As we know, mosquitoes spread West Nile virus, West Nile disease. According to the CDC, there are no vaccines to prevent or medication to treat it. The flooding of ditches picks up fertilizer, oil, pesticides, bacteria, and other pollutants as it makes its way through our stormwater ditches untreated to our rivers. And I've been told the smell is horrific with standing water within ditches as well as snakes going into homes as they seek shelter and flooding houses due to flooding. The flooding is also causing structural damage. I've met with Ms. Graham, and she has had to demolish storage buildings as well as evacuate her animals because of water flooding. Neighbors have also had to be evacuated by boat with the help of emergency workers. Thank God for them. Now, we have a lot of intelligent board members and staff. And I understand there are pros and cons to starting a fund, a funding program. I understand that the general statute states the county isn't responsible for landowners' ditches. However, we can think outside the box. I propose that we collectively, with the help of staff, start a pilot program, a pilot funding program that would have a small budget allocated in our areas that have prone flooding issues. Maybe we can provide rain barrels to help with storm runoff. This fund could, with the approval of the board, have a small balance of $10,000. This amount would only cover the fiscal year of 2021. This program, again, would be a pilot program and would be for individuals that have exhausted those organizations such as DOT and Water and Sewell. Those that unfortunately have, that don't have any other options. I understand the county has backholds that possibly could be an option. Another option would be to bid out the job. I have spoken with citizens, and they are also willing to organize in their communities and start community cleanups. They are committed to roll up their sleeves and help themselves. And lastly, the property owner could submit between two and three bids from local contractors, and the county would decide which is more feasible. I must again state that we must think outside the box to give our citizens a better quality of life. Just because we haven't done it doesn't mean we can't do it. We are the final say when it comes to our people, when it comes to this county. This pilot program could continue in the future if it is successful. Wayne County, and I was saying is, the good life grown here. In order for these individuals to have a good life grown here, sometimes they need a little help. So I'm proposing that we start a pilot program and see if it's able to, you know, alleviate some of the challenges that these citizens are having. I know that we didn't have anyone, we didn't have anybody able to speak today because of, you know, it's every other, it's once a month. But they're part of my presentation. So I want to have one of the citizens in Rolandwood come up, and she can address what she's experienced. And this is Ms. Evelyn, she's coming up. How are you today, ma'am?
I'm fine. My name is Evelyn Manley, and I live at 102.
Your last name, ma'am?
Evelyn Manley.
Manley?
Yes, ma'am. And I live at 102 Rolandwood Court. And I have a serious problem at my house. Every time it raining, like just like it's raining today, I can't use my bathroom. I can't wash clothes. I mean, I can't do nothing. I mean, everything just give right up. I can't do anything because I had a guy to come out, and he said my house is, he said, "See, Mike is going down." And every time it rain, that's what I get. And I was out of my house a whole year because of that. A whole year, I couldn't stay there. I stayed in my car about, I want to say about six months, me and my daughter. I mean, we actually lived out of our car. Until my church, they put me up in a motel. And I mean, it happened every time. When it rain hard, I mean, my yard is full. I can't walk out in the yard, none of that. And my friend out here, she live right behind me, she the same way. Me and her both, we was out of our house. We didn't have nowhere to stay. She stayed out of her car, her and her daughter. I mean, we just had a mess. And I went out and talked to Mr. Luke on 70 Highway. And he told me that my yard was actually where the water just stands. It just stayed there. And that's why I can't use my bathroom and stuff. But I mean, every time it rain, we get the same thing every time. If it rain two days, I'm in a mess. I have to leave to go use the bathroom somewhere else.
You spoke with who? Who'd you say you spoke with? Who did you, right here. Who'd you say you spoke with?
Mr. What's his name, Luther?
Oh, yeah, Thompson, okay.
Out on 70 Highway, he came out. And he been coming out checking on me because where I live at, that's all I do, living water.
You say it's in Rolandwood Court?
102 Rolandwood Court.
Ms. Chairman, do you mind if I ask some questions? Did NC DOT actually go out and clean out the ditch and the culvert there on the right away?
They come out, and they cleaned out, they dug some of them real deep. But mine is like this, the ditch, it haven't been dug out. It's just, the water just run, ain't nowhere for the water to run anyway. And I asked them if they would come out and kind of dig it a little deeper to see if I can get some relief from that. They said they couldn't do it. And I mean, that's their property, I mean, what I'm talking about now, it's theirs. And I've been out there several times. I've been out there so much that when I go in, he says, "Oh, here come trouble me." But I mean, I want to live decent too, you know. So, I mean, what am I do? I'm a widow, I stay by myself. And I'm just there.
Well, unfortunately, years back, developers developed properties, and they dug ditches in those subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
And it not necessarily had proper flow. And over the years, these ditches fill in. And as they fill in, then you've got standing water. And it's, it's prevalent in Wayne County and eastern North Carolina. I mean, they're all over everywhere.
But what I'm talking about, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So my question was, though, with NC DOT, when they cleaned out the ditch, did the water tend to flow away from you all?
No, not really.
It didn't?
No.
So that didn't help?
No.
Well, I'm reading this letter coming in here from Deborah Graham.
But she don't get no flood. Her yard don't flood at all.
Well, in there, though, it says they came out and they cleaned it out, but they left some of the tile with sediment in it. They didn't clean it out.
Well, they didn't clear your minds out either, not the tile.
The tile, they didn't clean it. They dug out around it, but they didn't clean it out.
They just dug a hole about that four, right there where the tile is.
Right.
And the rest of it, they left it. It's full, you know. They went there about that four, the tile in my driveway.
Well, they didn't clean out the tile, you haven't lowered the level for the water to flow.
Well, what they, what they've done, you're saying they clean out on each, on each end of the tile?
Right.
Yeah.
But they cleaned the tile. So what that's supposed to do, when it rains and the water comes through, it's supposed to wash the dirt in the tile out through that and wash that on that side. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Well, it can't wash ours out because they got the, the hole deeper than the, I can't explain it.
I can explain it because I've been out there. And the particular, the particular ditch that she's talking about, it's almost like it's not a ditch. It's not, it has no depth to it. So, you know, it's pretty much, almost as level as her yard is.
Yeah.
Now, that's an issue, but there's also issues with her other neighbors that the water's coming in from the back. That picture you see, there's another ditch there, and it's coming all in through the back. But.
Was there ever a ditch there? Evidently there was.
No, not since I've been there, not been there. I've been there about 40 years, I think.
Okay, so here's the thing on some of this development. You're in a cul-de-sac, correct?
Yes, sir.
So a lot of times, you, you actually, you got high points, and it's got to drain wherever. So, I mean, it may be, I mean, without going out there and checking things with, with lasers, I mean, there's, you know, you don't really know where the, the water's got to get, go somewhere. I mean, the water's got to be able to get out. I mean, if you dig the ditch all you want to, if you don't get it where it drains out the backside of property, you're just making.
You're scoring more water.
Exactly.
I agree, I agree. I mean, and that's, at this point, they've had professionals come out that do this. Some have just tried to appease them just by showing up and not really doing anything to help. And that's why I say we need to try to do something. You know, we've gotten a lot of options coming this way, you know. We, there's no, there's no, there's many ways we can, we can use money that is getting ready to come here. We have about almost $24 million that's getting ready to come here, emergency funds. So we can, at minimum, $10,000 is, is nothing to put aside for this particular neighborhood and other neighborhoods that may affect, that may be affected too.
Did any of these professionals give an estimate in regards to that?
Yes, yes. Ms. Graham, she was here. This is her long list of meeting with these individuals. And one side of her yard, they had given an estimate between $300 and $400 to dig it out. The other area was about $1,500, the rear area, where she has runoff that's coming from other neighbors' houses as well. So, I mean, it's, I mean, it seems like it's something feasible that can be done.
And what you're saying is they'll take responsibility when they dig it out, that it's going to drain?
That's going to be, well, once we.
I'm just asking, I mean.
I'm saying, once we decide that staff will draw something up. And, you know, if these people decide that they're going to accept the fund and they have to agree upon the terms that the county may set. And I think that's just, you know, keeping everybody safe.
Mr. Cropper?
She don't.
Mr. Cropper, those Rolandwood, is that state maintained streets?
Yes, sir.
They are, okay. Who was the developer, do you remember? Wells, Jeb Wells. He no longer on this earth.
Could have been him, right?
You know, sediment over, over 40, I mean, over the years, I mean, grass, I mean, as you cut it, and the grass does like this right here, and it holds up water, but.
Really what needs to be done is the roadside ditches need to be cut back and all the driveway tiles replaced. And then all be regraded and get some positive drainage. They have positive drainage in a lake back there to the north that it can go towards. But it's just so flat up at the front where they're talking about. And those, those drainage ways that long since we'll be in. And there's not present if they were ever even there to begin with.
And the issue about what Chip's saying is it's going to go from a ditch to a ditch.
Right.
I mean, you know, that's, that's a.
She don't even have a tile at her driveway. I don't understand how her house is, she don't even have a tile.
Well, some of it is where your actual, where your high point is in the, in the grade, and then it goes from there.
Probably cross drains under the roads that are stopped up, sealed. There's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot of problem there.
Mr. Cropper, you bring up an interesting thing here. And that is, we had a group in a subdivision in the northern end of the county that had problems with the road and the drainage. And that project, which was supposed to be a $200,000 project, ended up being $2.3 million. I mean, it just, in other words, it sounds easy. But all of a sudden, when you get government involved, I'm telling you, you don't want government involved. When you get government involved, it explodes because everybody's got to have their own regulations in there. And I remember that. The community had estimate of actually going in and paving the streets for around $200,000. And instead ended up being $2.5 million. And each one of those property owners now have an assessment of about $17,000 on each lot. And it's, it's a hard decision. But sometimes it's best for the community and the subdivision to get together and get a homeowners association, raise the dollars, and get those things done rather than getting government involved. Just, especially.
I may make one suggestion.
Okay.
And it's not an answer today because obviously this project is, you know, in the next five years. We have current CDBG funding. And if we can get the neighborhood or parts of the neighborhood qualified under CDBG, it's possible that we could do some drainage work, you know, within those existing funds. it's possible that we could do some drainage work, you know, within those existing funds. There are more monies coming down the road, I don't know how that's going to be allowed to be spent, but I do know we do have DR money currently that we can reallocate towards some projects in other places, such as if we could get them qualified, load a, a moderate income. So, I'm not an expert on that, we have a hired expert for that, but that would be something we could discuss further.
Well, I think the neighborhood wants the problem solved, I think that's why they've reached out to the...
And I want to agree with you when you said about organizing, Ms. Manley, she has actually been out there organizing and, um, starting to, you know, pull community together when it comes to issues that are going on here, because they want to better that community. Um, again, fundraising, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, can cut out a lot of red tape too, because we, I'm here, I'm trying to bring solutions, and I think this board is as well, so, you know, we're going to, we're going to start working on the process to see if we can develop a, a power program, but at the same time, um, Rollingwood community can start to figure out, hey, how can we, we, we try to do some fundraising? Maybe, you know, you know you a restauranteer, maybe we can sell some plates, you know, maybe we can do some of those things to start the process to at least clearing out one ditch until we can get a, 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 you know, get some idea of how this board is going to proceed on it, but we definitely have your back.
Excuse me, uh, Ms. Manley, how long have you been having this problem? How long have you been having this problem?
Hmm, a long time.
You can't remember when it started?
When, uh, what, this Florida?
Okay.
When it came?
Uh-huh.
That's when it came in my house, and when me and my daughter come out, the water was right here, on me and her. We could see the frogs and everything in the water, my house was full of water and everything.
Because I, I mean, I, I didn't necessarily grow up in that area, but I had family out there, and I remember how thriving of a community it used to be, and I know...
Everybody in that circle, nobody flooded but me.
Yes, ma'am, and I know sometimes...
Looked like the house is going down.
Yeah.
You know, my house is the lowest house over there.
Um, I agree with the rest of the board, I'm just hoping that, uh, one, maybe that we can make some phone calls as a, as a county to the DOT and put a little pressure on them to see if they can get back out there and try to solve the issue, because I know that helps as well, just individuals calling. Sometimes doesn't hold the weight as a entire county calling, the DOT.
And, and I, I'll go back to something Chip said, if, if, you know, maybe that's something we need to get with Dave Harris and look at, uh, because it, it sounds like to get a, a fix to the problem is going to take more than just cleaning out a ditch every six months or every year. That, that, it sounds like that this is a systemic problem that, that really needs to be fixed, and if, and if the area will qualify for CDBG funding, uh, that's really what it needs, is a holistic approach, not just, I, and I, I agree with trying to do something, you know, something's better than nothing. But it, it does need to be a holistic approach of how we can go in there and hopefully use, uh, some of the CDBG, uh, funding that, that is out there that we still have from, uh, Matthew and, and Florence, is that fair to Chip?
We, we've got to keep in mind now, we're, we're addressing, trying to address a problem that is normal rainfall. When it comes to hurricanes and floods, hundred-year floods, five-hundred-year floods, that, we, we can't solve that problem. But we, we can certainly, certainly look at the, the, the problem that's on, that's, you know, that for, for normal, normal rainfall. Is that not correct?
Yes.
And, 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 um, Mr. Chair, I just want us to always keep in mind, Dudley, you know, they got about ten thousand, over ten thousand residents in that area, and a lot of times they feel as though nothing's being done in that area for them. You know, we collect their tax dollars, so it's our obligation to try to help them as best we can.
Mr. Chairman, I, I caution us here, um, and I, I do understand, I do like the option on the CDB grant, and here's why. Because those dollars are available and it does not set a precedent to every other subdivision in our county. Imagine the issue of all of a sudden having a hundred subdivisions that wanted the county to fund going in and clinging out their ditches. And, and we have got to be careful here that we solve this problem, but don't open up Pandora's box, because we have established a new...
Precedent.
A new what?
Precedent.
A, a new program. Because if one community gets tax dollars to cling out ditches, then really all communities would be obliga-, would be obligated to all of them. So the CDB is actually, I think, one of the solutions, great idea, but they need help now. So let's see what we could do to spur that along and get some solutions to where somebody can go dig some ditches.
Well, there again, there again, on that project, the state sets priorities and we have to follow the priorities set forth by emergency man.
But this, this should be a priority.
Right, and we have to make sure we qualify, that the area qualifies as well as far as income-based, because everything with CDBG is income-based.
Well, and if it doesn't, then go back with another option.
And I believe, you know, it does, it does, because, I mean, you got a lot of families that, um, are in that lower tier, we, it's definitely a tier-one area. Um, I think that it does, if you go drive, drive around, you'll see, you know, and, and maybe we could start to use those funds to help people repair some, some homes, those, those, those CBGD funds down the line.
There's already a housing repair program currently.
Okay, well...
People can sign up for.
A lot of people in the county don't realize it though, so we have to kind of let them know that it is available.
Have we done an income statement with CDBG for that area, Chip, you know, where you go out and get the income?
By that area, no, ma'am, no, I know in some other CDBG programs that requires low income, DR funding is moderate too, so it may qualify. I'm not an expert on that, David Harris is who we pay for that, and he is an expert.
You've had, you know, feel like forms go around each...
It would have to get to that point, yep.
I've got, you know, a few Gold Leaf grants to clean out some ditches, of course, I know they're more or less in the western part of the state now.
We have already done that in Rollingwood as well, on Brentwood Drive, we spent several hundred thousand cleaning one ditch out back there. That was through, uh, soil conservation.
Well, that doesn't seem like it helps them any.
Ms. Manley, before, before we let you go, Ms. Manley, I have another question, um, do you know, uh, Ms. Teller, she's eighty-seven years old, and, and her daughter has had to take her to Georgia...
Right.
Because of the flooding.
Right.
Um, and that's something, you know, that's concerning to me, people have to...
She don't stay in her house, she's not there, and if they keep on, I won't be able to stay in mine, because, I mean, you just think about every time it rain, water's that high in your yard every time it rain, you can't even walk out unless you got boots on. I can't come up to my house unless I got on some rain boots. Not even to get in my car.
I'm so glad that, that you came, and, um, and we, you know, I believe this board has compassion for your issue, and we're just going to, you know, see if we can work with staff to try to put something together.
We'll reach out to DOT and see what they've actually got, and just, just see what they've actually done, and, you know, there might not be anything that, that, anything else they can do, but we'll find, we'll find out.
Thank you, sir.
We'll get back to Mr. Weasley.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you all for coming. Okay, we're down to County Manager's report.
Um, just want to let the board know, we are diligently working on budget, uh, right now, and the other thing I do want to mention is, uh, we have shots available, uh, if you're in the, the right group, uh, please check our website, uh, please sign up. Uh, we're, we're trying to get as many shots in arms, uh, Group Four is, is, I think that they're opening up today, but fairly soon. Next couple of days, Group Four should be opening up, and that's basically with people with two or more health, doesn't matter what age. But we, we, we've got shots that we're available to give, please go to our website, uh, we want to get as many shots in arms as we can. I do want to thank the work that our Health Department, our Public Affairs, our Emergency Management, what everybody's doing. Uh, it is still all hands on deck, and, uh, but we're, we're getting them out, and, and you've got a lot to be proud of, of the, the work that's being done. So, uh, that's all I have at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, question for Mr. Parker before we go to committee, Commissioner's committee reports. Is any of the things that we've discussed today, do we, can we, or do we need to discuss it in closed session?
It depends, I'd need a...
In reference to, well, the, the Director of Deeds Office and, and this, the, the ditch thing, is it, any of that that we can or need to talk about in closed session?
I would think with respect to the ditches, no, you can, you can talk about personnel in closed session if you're talking about the activities of an individual, but just talking generally about the salary, I would think, no.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board, do, do we or do we not need a closed session?
I don't think we do.
I, I personally just think that it's something that we need to discuss, uh, whether the board wants to do it in closed session or open, it's fine with me either way.
Anyone else? Could I possibly classify that as a legal question that I would want to consult with counsel on, in closed session?
If it's, if it is a legal issue, yes.
And personnel.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we go into closed session, discuss with counsel a legal question.
I have a motion on the floor, is in the other discussion. All in favor of going into closed session, show of sign of right hand. Or do we want to do this now, or...
We are out of closed session, back in open session. One thing we have left is our committee report. Commissioner Doherty?
I did attend the Jackport Commission. Things are moving briskly out there. Attended the Health Board meeting. As you all know, there are some issues that have been resolved with the COVID. I think they're doing an exceptional job out there at the Busman Building in regards to delivering these vaccines. I went and had my vaccine shot and got in and out of there in hardly any time at all. It was just like clockwork. They're doing a fantastic job. Big shout out to Joel in our Public Information Office. He designed the new online procedure to actually register to get your vaccine, and it really has taken a great deal of stress and load off of our staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. It's actually Women's History Month. A lot of times, we tend to forget about our women. I think none of us would be here without a woman today. They do have some scientific means nowadays, but I think the only way is coming through a woman. And I just want to thank all the women, all our women's staff here at the county. I want to thank my mom. And I just want everybody to realize Women's History Month is a dedicated month to reflect on the often overlooked contributions of women in the United States. From Abigail Adams to Susan B. Anthony, to Joanna True, to Rosa Parks, and the timeline goes on. So, I want to acknowledge those women as well. Thank you.
Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Okay. Ms. Aykoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Been a very good meeting, very informative. I want to thank Sheriff Pierce. He's hanging in there with me about the trash situation and everything. I took a road trip yesterday, and on Highway 117 in the deadly area about American Legion and Wayman Moore Park has been one of the worst areas I have seen with trash. I also went to Mount Olive Exchange Club and gave a presentation and talked with them about some things, and they were very perceptive on the things that we're working on here as county commissioners, and wanted to give them an update on some of the things. I'm also going to meet with the Pikeville Board in April to give them an update on what we're doing here as a board, if they have any questions for us also. Trying to get out in the community, introduce myself, and really be a part of the community, and listen to the voice and be the ear of the community. That's all I got. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
During the Eastern Carolina Council presentation this morning, you heard her mention census. Census drives everything to our funding, to our representation in Washington, D.C., to the General Assembly in North Carolina. I don't think people understand the importance of census. So, if you've not signed up, I want to understand they're still signing up through April 1st, I think. I may be wrong on that. Also, sales tax was brought up during Allison's presentation, and we need to thank our legislature, as Joyce mentioned, for our forethought of making sure that we collected the sales tax for online purchases, because that has got probably one of the largest impacts in the 4.1 billion surplus that we got in Raleigh today, and growing. Also, if you've not gotten your second shot, and it was before, I think it's the 12th, I talked to Dr. Stackhouse yesterday. He said if you have not gotten a phone call or do not have an appointment time, you can come today, which is Tuesday, and you can come Thursday, because we need to try to get the second shots out. If your shot was before the 12th, on the 12th or before in February, you need to come get it. And I think that's all I got.
Your talk's...
I'd like some good news on the virus situation at the hospital. We only had nine patients that is, as of Friday, and only two of those were on ventilators. I also sit in on the Eastern Carolina County Council Executive Meeting, and we're reviewing the bylaws there, which may change the composition of the organization somewhat. And also sit on the Steering Committee of North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the IG, the General Government, and the Health and Human Services Boards. And that was it. Mr. Chairman?
I don't really have anything. I appreciate what the other commissioners are doing, and I also want to thank all of the county staff that's involved with the COVID situation. If I start calling names, I'm going to leave somebody out, but there's some that's done a lot, and some that's done very little. But at least I think most people have participated, most county employees, and I just want to thank all of them. Do I have a motion to go back in closed session?
So move.
I have a motion. All in favor, show sign in right hand. We are back in closed session. Cut the cameras off.
We are back in open session. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
Set move.
Okay. We're adjourned.
You put the hammer down.